Okay, we're having a few technical difficulties, but we'll go ahead and start the meeting. And so, Mr. Adams is going to open with the implications, please.
God, we thank you so much for your love and everything that you've done for us. And God, as we come before your presence to conduct our business, let cool heads preside. And God, you just be in the midst of everything that we do. Be with all the workers in the county that have sick, lost loved ones or people that are in the hospital, whatever it may be, be with them, God, give them comfort and peace that only you can give. Pray you will be with every former government from our local right here all the way up to the federal level. God, just let you be made in every decision. And God, whatever we do, let us honor you and keep us safe as we travel back to our homes. In your name we pray. Amen.
Do the prayers believe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The ethics statement Maria used at August 18th this evening. Members of the County Board of Commissioners are advised hereby of their, you know, their duty under the Local Government Ethics Act and should avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of such conflict. And further are instructed to refrain from participating in any manner coming before this Board of County Commissioners with respect to which there is a conflict of interest or the appearance of such conflict as may be allowed by law. Do we have any modifications to the agenda?
We do. We need to add an item for advertisement of tax liens.
Okay, so that would be under, I guess, under business.
Yeah, I'd put that under maybe F, under new business.
Okay. Okay, any others?
Yes.
Okay, I get a motion to add this as item F to the agenda. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so like to approve the agenda. You have a motion to approve the agenda as adopted.
Motion to approve as adopted, or as amended.
All right, adopted, okay. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Now, we have three sets of minutes in front of you, so if you have any changes to any of them, speak up. If not, we'll just accept all three as presented.
I make a motion, we accept all three as presented.
On second.
Motion and second to accept them. All in favor? Okay, motion passes. All right. Now then, we're into public forums and, Meryl, you got the list over there?
She doesn't want to get that out there.
So, but we're out of luck. Technical problem didn't get any better, so, all right. So, I guess we'll go ahead and start with. Okay, is Maria on her way back there?
She is.
Give us just one minute, if you don't care. We thought we were going to have a PowerPoint, but I guess not. We'll just have the pictures here for you, um, issue in a few minutes. Well, you got it going. Okay, all right.
We can start.
Okay, we'll start. We'll be closing.
First, Mr. John Blair.
Who do you have to go stand there to talk?
Good evening, board members. Uh, in respect to the airport, now that we have the new improved operations manager, I noticed I, um, talking to the finance department, that you guys do not have an ex capital expenditure item for the airport. Your new airport manager is collecting various costs and stuff for the compliance part and also some improvements. And if we can, on item F that you just mentioned, add another item, airport capital expenditure. Otherwise, we're not going to make any headway on any of the compliance issues. Thank you, that's all I have.
Next.
Is it Frank Hartling?
And for those of you first time in here, it's three minutes in the public forum. Now, this will be short and sweet. I'm sure there's been other speakers that are more articulate. Uh, I'm up from Unaca. This has to do with the closing of the dumpster location of Violet, Bear Paw and Whitner Bend. First time that most of the people find out about it when they go down to their dumpster and see a sign that says in two weeks it's closing. No chance for public debate. And for Blue Ridge Electric's grid, this is going to affect over 500 households. Because now they're going to be made to go all the way down to Tex- Tex- Texaco. And I'm not so sure those people are going to be happy having all the rats in their neighborhood. So, my six mile trip to get rid of my garbage, uh, down in Whitner Bend, is now going to turn into a 30 mile round trip to go all the way down to Texaco. And when I called a young lady at the solid waste, she said, well, just making a trip with your groceries. I live in the mountains and I come down every two weeks and I get garbage before then. So, I'm going to go down 30 miles, come back, get rid of the garbage. We don't want to have trucks. And I'm wondering, since they close all three of them, if they do, is my tax assessment for garbage going to go down? And Whitner Bend, that's what I'm talking about, most of our shoes. It has cameras, but has been levy for people to break the rules. And lately, the last seven, eight, nine months, it's been really in good shape. You don't see refrigerators anymore and couches in there anymore. When I talked to the lady, she said, well, she still get construction people throwing some wood and stuff in there. So, the majority of people are going to get punished for a few people instead of policing that one. So, you've got people from Violet all the way to Upper Great Creek that use that thing. We're going to disenfranchise all those people so to make it easier on somebody. I don't know who, but it's certainly not going to make it easier for all these residents that live in this area. Thank you.
Next is Becky Wright.
You need to fix this before you start. Quarter hour, but I've lost six seconds. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners and our county attorney for beginning the planning board to create a land use plan. I realize you all have busy lives and this will add extra work, but I believe it is immediately necessary for our county to get a plan in place. I don't know if any of you had time to listen last month to Senator Marky as I did, as he chaired the first ever senate hearing focused on the urgent need to crack down on the growing environmental impacts of crypto mining. He introduced legislation to require crypto mines that consume more than five megawatts of power to disclose those admissions to the EPA. Crypto mines in the U.S. are estimated to use enough power to light every home in the nation and these facilities produce enough greenhouse gas emissions as seven million cars. At this hearing, Marky spoke with experts on the crypto's industry, energy consumption, and the environmental consequences of the crypto admissions. The crypto industry is growing and so is a plume of pollution around their mining facilities, said Marky. While we're working together as a nation to face down an existential crisis that puts the health, safety of our people and our planet in jeopardy, crypto miners are sucking megawatt after megawatt from our public grids and admitted skyrocketing greenhouse gases, just so they can make a buck for themselves. We can't afford to let this industry run roughshod over our communities any longer. Scott Fielder, a fellow person for the TBA, tells me that it does not pursue crypto mines as a target market. And it's up to local utilities like the Market Fire Board in the Blue Ridge Electric to decide who gets those services and who gets to cut those services and a possible blackout. The three mines in our counties' megawatt consumption is sucking up our energy. That's why we have the TBA answering the LPC's needs for the new transmission lines. TBA says the proposed project has been under consideration for this area for several years because of difficulties in maintaining the system and the inadequate resiliency of the transmission lines. The assessment they did, the board says, is also includes load additions not included in the native load growth, such as the cryptocurrency loads. It's not about other types of growth in our county for reliability and stability. We have enough here. It's for the LPCs to provide electricity to grow these mines at the cost of destroying our land and people for a couple of LPCs to profit from a careless, greedy consumer base. The people this county need you to work diligently on getting a land use plan in place quickly before we see transmission lines draped all over, like that picture up there, be draped with them. I thank you all for allowing me to speak for the beautiful parks of this county.
Craig Miller?
Well, I want to thank the board members for allowing us to come in and speak tonight. My name's Craig Miller. I'm a resident of Unaca and actually a new guy from Chattanooga, Tennessee. And I'm going to mirror a lot of things that my predecessor mentioned earlier about the dumpster closing. And obviously, I think it's an inequity that we continue to pay taxes when this service is being denied of us. We're all creatures of habit. I think you guys have probably done a great job of getting people to use those dumpsters. And I know there are some that, that buck the system and they abuse it. And I got that, I understand that. But as a responsible homeowner and someone who moved here for the beauty of this, uh, this, this community, I hate to see that happen because I know there's people out there that may not afford the fuel or the time to take their garbage elsewhere. So, they're lucky to even make it to some of these dumpster sites to properly dispose of it. You know, I, I know there's other options here because I've been intimately involved with recycling and large trash, just, you know, dispersments. And I found ways to, to fund these things. And in a lot of ways, we were able to basically pay for the service. Uh, you know, can we enlarge the dumpsters, reduce the hauls? Can we find ways to resolve this situation without this edict taking effect tomorrow? So, you've left us residents, roughly 500 homes out there, with having to scramble to figure out what we're going to do here. Yeah, it may be an opportunity for some entrepreneur to do something, but obviously, it's going to come at a cost to us to pay someone for this service in addition to the taxes we're paying. So, I think we need to revisit this. I know there's a solution. We just got to get together and make that happen, okay? I appreciate your time.
John Mason?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm also from Unaca and I'm here to talk about the green box issue. I know that you all are frustrated with the litter problem we have at Cherokee County. And I'm sure you're especially frustrated with all of the abuse that gets heaped upon these dumpster, dumpster sites. I can't understand why people do it. There's no excuse for it. But, but it, but it's a reality. We have a real active cleanup program out in Unaca, litter sweep. Try to keep, try to work on keeping the roads clean. But I guess what I'm here to say is, taking those dumpster sites away, it's not going to do anything to make our problem less. It's just going to make it worse. And we, we work hard enough now to keep just the litter off, off the side of the road. And I realize that, that the abuse in the green box, green boxes is a little bit different type of problem than just roadside litter. But I sincerely believe that when those dumpsters go away, our problems will get worse. So, I would just encourage you to continue to work on finding a site somewhere up in the Unaca end of Joe Brown Highway to put some sort of a facility for those people up, we, we who live up there to use. Thank you.
Ellen Harris?
I don't have much to say. I'm from Unaca also about the trash. I do wonder, what's, what's the real purpose? Did you guys, I assume you did it for finances, that you cut, you know, it's saving you money. Is that correct? Because really, as far as the sites have been, they've been so much better since you did the fences and the cameras. So, you don't pull up there and see all the stuff around. So, I just find it real hard to believe this. Oh, it's such a problem that, you know, it's messy. It's not. It's much better. Why don't you just expand that a little, give us a little recycling thing out there? And mostly, I'm like, I absolutely, you're doing it for money, you know, not for any other reason. It's saving you money to spend on whatever else. I asked before we came here from Unaca, I said, who's bringing the torches? But nobody brought them. What I really want to know is how much are you going to reduce my property taxes? Because that's one of the few things you do for us out in Unaca. What do you, what do you, how do you serve us out in Unaca? You give a little bit of money to the fire department. What else do you do? You know, we are far away from the sheriff. Anybody, anybody, you know, they used to say by the time the sheriff got there, we've already shot him. We, we don't do that anymore. But what do you do for us, for our property tax money? But you keep raising, you keep raising our property value, raising the mileage rate, and now you're taking away one of few services that you do for us. And it is going to be a big mess. Years ago, you talked about getting rid of the dumpsters. And I asked, I said, so when people start dumping on the side of the road, which they will, what's going to happen? Are you guys going to do anything about it? Oh, yeah, call us, we'll pick it up. It's like, yeah, okay. That's all. I just, I, what do you do for us? Do any of you answer during a public forum? What else do you do for us, though? I'd like to see where my property tax money goes because that was one of the few things that benefited me. Thank you. Maybe I can think of one other thing to say.
Robert Willis?
Thank you all so much for allowing me to speak. Nice to see you folks here and giving us your time to listen to us. I'm also from Unaca. And I see we're all well represented here because this is a major concern for us. You're closing Violet, you're closing Beaver Dam. I was reading through your 10-year solid waste management plan, which was signed in 2012. So, I don't know if that is still in effect or it needs to be revised or amended. But I would just like to know if a new plan can be set into place so that we all have the scope of what's going on? Because we are pretty remote out there. And when you take these things away from us, it just, it compromises our way of life. And I believe in the municipality that owes us this service. You have a commitment to our community because we live here, whether it's Cherokee County or the city of Murphy, whoever it is. And I really would like to know what's going on with Whitner Bend. Because I'm hearing different rumors that it's going to close as soon as crews are available to move green boxes. And I've also heard that it might, it might make it till the first of the year, in 2024. So, anything that y'all can help us with? Like John says, we spend, uh, we go four times a year quarterly cleaning up the roadside. All the way from Violet, we get other community, other community clubs involved. And we do Beaver Dam. Uh, we do all the way through Great Creek. Last time, we went all the way through Hanging Dog, too. And we do it four times a year and there's a lot of trash. And like John says, it's just going to get worse now. So, if y'all could please get a new plan in place, solid waste management 10-year plan, so we can all be on the same page and tell us what y'all can do for us out there. It also said in the 10-year plan that they were considering a Great Creek managed convenience center. And I was wondering, any of that might still be in the works? Because Great Creek Convenience Center is a plus for us as far as we live. Thank you very much.
Jack Albert?
Can you hear me from back there or do I need to go up there? I have pretty loud voice.
Yes, please come to the podium.
Okay. Be a stage fright. I do. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and I appreciate being here. Uh, once again, I'm from Unaca. And I just want to present a few statistics. Uh, we got a grant from North Carolina to do some cleanup. And some of the statistics are, we spent from the winter of last year to the present time hauling up garbage from Beaver Dam, Joe Brown. And when I mean garbage, I'm talking about refrigerators, air conditioners, ceiling fans, washers, dryers that have been thrown down the embankment. Now, I know they've been there a few years and I'm assuming they were from people that, well, they didn't know what to do with them. And I know you have a problem with what's being thrown in to the green boxes, as you call them. But we spent like weeks out there hauling this up. We got six tons of trash that we took to the metal recycling center and to the landfill. In addition to that, we got 211 bags on our four trips, four times a year, just from Unaca alone. Now, my concern is that this may increase. And we're doing this voluntarily because it's a beautiful part of this county. And we love it out there and we want to keep it clean. But I think you guys or whoever makes this decision to shut that down will probably increase the amount of work that we do voluntarily out there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ron Brown?
Good evening, and I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for all their hard work. But one of the things that I go back to, the same thing again, is when you limit the public and the taxpayers to three minutes, you look on the list, there's only five to 10 people. We're here for a concern of our tax money, of our living conditions. I just spent over a month in and out of the hospital and to doctors because of our air, because of our water. And when we start talking about the water and the stuff here in the county, well, yeah, you bring in the crypto mining thing and then that changes the total environment for me, all this public, for the animals, for the total environment and stuff. Then you start talking about the TBA, that changes everything. Then you talk about the roundup. Do you think I'm a 72-year-old person that can run across that roundup, roundabout, excuse me, before the traffic gets in? And then you can't even get a semi truck up and down. You had it engineered, I guess, by people that sit behind a desk and don't even come here to look at it. You go to McDonald's and there's a truck parked there blocking roads for hours and hours. How can you take that small little area and put a roundabout in there? You can't. You look at the sewer pipes and you look at the water system that we have here. When you talk about the board and stuff, education is something you should be doing. You need to look at the one-month plan, the six-month plan, the one-year plan, the five-year plan, the 10-year. This water system just didn't happen yesterday. It's been happening all along because we're not maintenance-ing. We're not doing our jobs as citizens and commissioners to take care of maintenance. Maintenance of the schools, maintenance of the roads, all of this comes down. But no, you just put it right back on the taxpayers and you expect us. And then you have a closed section, session, and you decide you're going to settle a person that's committed a crime and charge us $42 to $43 million of our tax money. They didn't spend the time in jail. They're not paying restitution. So, we are. Why is the public paying all of this when the commissioners need to get it together and come up with some better plans? I went to meeting after meeting for everything in this county. And you know what you find out? There's no follow-up. There's nothing ahead of the meeting. I mean, how many of you found out about the, the roundup and the TBA? No, we're finding out a horse is after the car. You're not putting it in the paper. You're not telling us in advance. You go to a lot of counties in the United States and it's three months, six months. They find out the notice, they get to vote on it and they get to tell the commissioners what we should be doing. Not here in Cherokee County. We found about it when it's after the fact. One of the biggest things is transparency, the contracts. You take the new contracts, look in the paper of the new contracts. You're now making stipulations on the contract that should have been done for years, but it's not done for certain, but now it's done for everybody else. I have at least 10 minutes of, of stuff to say, but once again, I'm limited to three minutes. And look at your list today. How many people are on the list? Eight to 10. I think we deserve more than three minutes, don't you? Thank you.
That's everyone.
That's everyone that's signed, uh, so, okay, go ahead. I think Commissioner Rigs has something she'd like to say.
So, first of all, in regards to closing of Whitner Bend, Violet and Bear Paw, Commissioner Stiles has some pictures and I'm not sure, but that's what we were trying to put up on the screen. The county has looked before out in the Unaca and Great Creek area for property for the county to purchase. Right now, all three of those sites are on TBA or forestry land. We do not own it.
Or DOT right-of-way.
Or DOT right-of-way. The county doesn't own it. So, if there is property out there that the county could afford to purchase to put a manned site, we would look at doing that absolutely. As far as water and sewer, that's the town of Murphy. The county commissioners have absolutely nothing to do with water and sewer. The TBA, none of us knew anything about TBA, putting the 27 miles until I got my letter in the mail and contacted the county manager. The county had never been informed. And as far as the roundabout, that was a decision made by the NC DOT. We had a meeting last week. And all the complaining that had gone on, only 35 people showed up to talk on DOT. So, just wanted to answer those things.
Can I answer one thing to, if there are a couple little things that, I write, I write down what I do. Every time someone talks, I write down exactly what they say so we can answer questions the best we can. One thing you were talking about, Ron, is being notified. You were notified the same time we were on the roundabout.
You weren't notified. You just said so.
We, we weren't notified until you were notified about the meeting. The DOT actually told us that there is absolutely nothing that we could do for this roundabout. It was a done deal. Uh, I expressed my concern extremely loud to let it be known that this is not a dictatorship. And, uh, we received another email thanking us for coming to the meeting, which was not a very nice email. But the more people that come, the more we need to. Uh, one thing I heard one gentleman mention here about the fines for the dumpsters. Uh, how many, how much money have we collected this year, candy, just roughly in fines because of dumpsters? Just so you can see how much that we actually collect.
It'll take me a few minutes.
But it's minimal.
It's very minimal.
Well. Well, I understand, sir, but I'm in the same boat you are. I, I don't have to drive a car.
Find the way.
But I have no dumpsters in my house.
Find the way.
I have to drive, I have to hire a company to come and get my garbage drive to take it my way.
Find the way.
Seventeen miles.
Okay, we're, public forum is open. Okay. And, uh, I'm gonna pass some pictures around, and you can see some of the things we've been dealing with at the dumpsters. And we have, sir, okay, we finished, well, okay.
You didn't ask us.
Excuse me, sir, we have finished with public forum.
Five minutes, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, that'd be fine, thank you.
Find the way, my friend, find the way.
Charles, you care to get this and pass it out, and let them look at some of the pictures? You know, we, this is a, I know it's a tough decision for all of us, but we've tried to purchase property. We've ridden up and down the road, you know, a number of years looking. And it's not just a piece of property you can put it on, it has to be accessible, line of sight. DOT has to look at it, make sure it's safe for egress and ingress to it, so it's more to it than that. But at any rate, and as to the amount of taxes, there's only five percent of our total budget goes to, to the landfill.
Are they making you leave dumpsters? Are they making you take them away?
No, okay.
How many cameras have we replaced at that one?
Well, we, we replaced the entire building once because the entire building was stolen. And then, uh, the second time the building was broken into, and the camera system was stolen.
And it's pushed over the bank.
And then it was stolen again, and we've since, we've not yet, the board chose not to replace the cameras after the second time, so...
Okay, anything else? Okay. Thank you for coming, and we'll continue on and see what happens. Budget and finance is the next item. And, um, so we have a, a budget revision for the registered deeds, which we discussed at our budget work session for twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars for scanning services. Second, second, all in favor? Uh, budget revision for, uh, insurance proceeds to the sheriff's office for the building.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate you coming.
And if your fines are so small, but obviously you're not collecting the misuse, something to think about.
We've got, uh, forty-four hundred dollar deductible. Forty-four hundred dollars and no deductible, so... Excuse me, gentlemen? If you don't care, please, we can't hear up here. Thank you. Okay, now, okay, do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
In a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor? Now, we have a budget revision fund balance to, uh, increase the legal fees for property liens and foreclosures for the costs that we had in trying to, uh, do the advertising and the foreclosure on the properties on the tax liens.
Make a motion, we accept it.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor? Okay, now we have a revision from the school on the Article forty, forty-two sales tax to replace the HVAC system at the High Wasidam Health Center for ninety-two hundred and forty-five dollars. Do we have a motion to approve? Second, any discussion?
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor? School has a request now for a chiller at High Wasidam for the rental of one. I assume that, uh, the reason we're having to rent one is, was John? The reason you have to rent a chiller for that much money for a period of time is?
Well, it's, it's actually just gonna be a reimbursement, it's, it's insurance is going to cover it till it gets put in, and we have to run here and running.
Oh, okay, but so you get, will get reimbursed?
Reimbursed.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Give it in writing.
Uh, second. All in favor?
Could I have one question real fast? About the roof at, at Andrew's Middle School, I'm still getting emails about that. Is that in the process of being looked at, or?
We've, we've had that roof looked at, and that's something we've been presenting our boards very soon.
Okay, I was just looking at emails, I just wanted to check.
It's, it's been evaluated, and we'll be, uh...
Okay, thank you, John.
We're gonna fix it and not have to buy bigger buckets, right? Okay, all right. Now we have a budget revision for the Rock Gym Security Project, twenty-three hundred dollars for card system and cameras.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
This will be one that don't have the codes, not correct.
It just, to those folks who have the right to use it, we have to get the access to, but at least it'll track who is using it.
Okay.
Okay. And they can do that by number assigned to the per, per person, so that...
That and the cameras will capture who's going in, so...
Right, but I mean, if somebody has a code, one, two, three, four, and it needs to block them out, we can take that out.
We know whose code it is, and we can shut that code down.
Will they have the code, or will they have a card like we've got?
I think this one's actually a card reader.
Okay, so they'll be able, IP will be able to track that card?
Yeah, this is a card reader.
Who's that card?
But they can, yeah, but they can...
So there will be multiple card codes.
Right, and they can void one if they need to.
They're, the card will have to be programmed to that door, and at any time we want to stop access for an individual who's been provided a card, we just shut that card down, there's no more access.
It's like our...
Have to cut the code down.
Same thing they do to us when we lose the election. Okay, all right.
Turn them off, go ahead.
Turn them off, all right. Health Department fee schedule. It's been approved by the Board of Health. Do we have any?
Motion to approve.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Uh, new business, the Tourism Development Authority applicants, uh, have four letters of interest for reappointment. Hold on a minute, I gotta get down to that. Rhea's got me all organized here in the house. Let's see, I'm in the...
There you go.
Now, we were going so fast, or I got behind, I'm sorry. Okay, so what we have, we have four of the members that are on there currently that would like to have reappointment, and they've sent their letters of interest in that. And we have one open seat, and we have two applicants, and I think both of those applicants are here tonight, so we'd like to hear from them, and, uh, so, uh, in the book here, uh, Sherry McGregor. If you would care to step up and give us a little information about yourself, please.
Just, just a brief introduction. I was thinking about one of the county commissioner, but after tonight's meeting...
Can you pull that mic down just a little?
But I can't fix that for you now.
Okay, that's fine, go ahead, speak up, turn it on.
Um, just follow you, like, yeah. My name is Sherry McGregor, and I own Timberwood Mountain Realty. I started my real estate company back in nineteen ninety-three with about three hundred and eighty-five dollars. In two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, in what I call the Obama crisis, I had to find something other than just real estate to help my company survive and to truthfully feed my family. So I went into vacation and long-term rentals and property management. Uh, there's a real need for that in this community, and you need to have people in there that understand property management. It's a different animal on its own. Vacation rentals are really hot right now, and the community is starting to spur some new growth. And so I would like to be part of the Tourism and Development Board to help spur that growth.
Have any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I'm confused here a little bit. This says it's five seats, three seats, three letter of intent for reappointment, and two new, I guess, but we've got four names for reappointment.
What we have, what, that, that we have four, we have four that are on the board currently that want to be reappointed.
Okay, so they should be four instead of three.
Right, right, okay. And then we have, uh, it is kind of confusing. And then we have two applicants for one slot.
I'm understanding that, okay.
I said three instead of four.
Oh, mine says four, and yours says, I don't know, man. But we're not compromising four, okay? All right, so next, uh, Laura Lachance, if you would, please.
Yes, sir. Hello, thank you for, um, allowing me to come and introduce myself to you all. My name's Laura Lachance, and I too am applying for the position on the Cherokee County Tourism Development Authority. And, um, I wanted to bring to your attention that I bring unique qualifications to the TDA board. I am the Downtown Director for the Town of Murphy, and I'm also a vacation rental owner myself. My family, we've lived in the community permanently for eleven years, my husband and my two kids and I. And for the last five years, we've had our own vacation rental property that I manage on my own. But in addition to that, my position with the town has, um, given me, um, unique qualifications as far as tourism. We, um, the town, and also, I am also a member of the Murphy Business Association on their board. So through both of those organizations, I have coordinated a lot of events that are geared, um, towards locals and also tourists coming to our community. Um, I coordinated the Red, White &amp; Brew Festival, the Murphy Spring Festival, and also the Capital Christmas Tree event that happened back in November. So, um, and also I have a background in economic development. And, um, I really think that through my experience and my education I could bring further efforts to help promote the unique characteristics of Cherokee County. In particular, I, um, I would like to have a better and more accurate identification of where our visitors are coming from, so we can market to those visitors and the demographics of those visitors as well. The TDA does a great job right now, but, but I think, um, we could do better in, in trying to know who those visitors are and capitalize on that. So I think I bring a different characteristic other than the, um, the current board, and, but could complement well with the people that are on the board right now. So I thank you very much for the consideration, thank you.
Any questions, sir?
Okay, can I make a motion? So I'd like, like to make a motion, first of all, to reappoint the four members seeking, uh, to be reappointed. That would be John Posey, Sandra Daly, Steve Dickey, and Mike Shade.
I'll say it. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Okay?
And then can we appoint?
Yeah, we can.
We can appoint one of these tonight? Uh, I would like to make a motion to appoint Sherry McGregor as a new applicant, or new member of the board.
Have a motion, we have a second.
I'll say it.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? And all in favor? Oppose? Uh, the next item is the Arts and Education Proclamation. So, we get a, we need to read that, which is...
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve it without any... Okay, we'll do that.
Do we need to read that out?
The reading, I mean.
I'm not looking on my phone either, I don't have that part of the agenda we're talking about.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Commissioner Briggs, if you'd like to read that. It's got too many big words, go ahead.
Help me if I get stuck. "Arts are education," by the Cherokee County Board of Commissioners of Proclamation. Whereas all students have the right to an arts education that includes dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts taught by certified art teachers in partnership with community providers. Whereas arts education has the power to change students' lives. Whereas arts education is a key to reigniting students' learning in a post-COVID-19 world. Whereas arts education helps nurture healthy, inclusive communities where all points of view are respected. Whereas arts education experiences help students understand their own cultural roots and appreciate others' cultural roots and traditions. Whereas arts education supports the social and emotional well-being of students and fosters a more positive, safe school environment. Whereas arts education is part of a well-rounded education for every student as outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act and in state law. Now therefore, the Cherokee County Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of theater and arts in education, and also recognizes March twenty-seventh as World Theater Day."
We have a motion to approve that, do we have a second on that?
I'll say it.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Next item, uh, tax releases and refunds. I think Wiggins and, um, Commissioner Briggs have one on there, so I don't know if we need to approve that or not.
Go ahead, just approve, just one and a half.
Motion, they're fair.
Okay, any, second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, now, the North Carolina Wildlife Beaver Management Assistance Program. And we've had this come up before, and, uh, I think it's a great thing that we need to participate in because there's a lot of darned beavers in Cherokee County. You've got a creek, you've been, you've been visited by one of them.
I think there's one behind the oak slipper, y'all.
And the cost is six thousand dollars, but the, the Cherokee County Soil and Water Resource has agreed to cover that, is that correct?
They have, yes. Uh, J.B. Reeves, their agent, has agreed to act as the lead between, uh, the program and the property owners.
So if a property owner has beavers, they contact J.B.? And J.B. will send someone out and take a look and eradicate the beavers?
Yes. And, and just to let folks know, for the county's participation at six thousand dollars, and, and of course, this year being funded by Soil and Water, we greatly appreciate them doing that. Uh, what that basically means is landowner's cost share fee would be twenty-five dollars per visit, and that covers up to fifteen visits per year, uh, and it is a hundred and twenty-five dollars per dam removed. Uh, that fee goes up to a hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, after July first. But still, the amount of damage that they create to property, and, and that's very cheap, especially considering some of what the, that equipment will go through trying to access those dams, so...
So if you have a Beaver Dam, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, I can get rid of it.
Between now and July first, yes, and it goes up to a hundred and fifty plus the twenty-five-dollar site visit.
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
I'll say it, that one. All in favor?
If you've ever had to deal with beavers, it's well worth it, let me tell you.
There, okay, okay, finalize phase one of the High Wasidam park project. We've got to kind of make some decisions as to how we're gonna prioritize that to, to go after the grant dollars, so...
Yes.
I don't have a copy of it.
We've got a copy of the Beaver here. We have a copy of any yet?
We table that tomorrow and approve the Lena's advertisement. Thanks, and we should get on that here.
Oh, well, okay, all right. Okay, we're gonna, before we get into that discussion, Kalina, we're gonna jump up, we'll move the agenda, go ahead and let you, uh, present yours on the advertising for the tax liens.
Okay, um, but on the North Carolina general statute, I have, you have to charge me with, uh, advertising these tax liens in the scout. That's more or less what it says.
So I'll make a motion that we tell you that you have to advertise the tax liens in the Cherokee Scout. Is that what you mean? We charge you, aren't we, you charge you with it?
I say to charge. I'm out there to charge.
Okay, all right. Motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you. And then, does that also include that if we get a phone call, we could file them to you then, or?
We get plenty of them, it's in my life.
One more, right?
Thank you, we appreciate what you do. And our collection rate was, was nine, almost ninety-nine percent last year, what was it?
It was ninety-nine point two, wasn't it?
Yeah, right, yeah, he's right at ninety-nine. So, I mean, that's a, that's a really, that's the highest rate we've ever had in collection rate, so... And the good part about that is if we collect it, we don't have to, next year, try to charge the taxpayer to bill their budget.
The more you collect, the less you gotta make up for it.
That's right, yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, now we're back to this phase one of the High Wasidam. Do we have some information on that?
Can we table that till tomorrow, with our, after our vote in here, real fast?
Yeah, that'd be...
That's right. Well, did we not agree on the progress meeting?
No, I think we need to...
I think they need to do it, don't they? Randy, don't they have to have something from us so they can go, so Silas can go forward with the grant?
Yeah, those grants start first of May, so they, they wanna have an idea of how to pull that grant together. Um, each of you had received in that original, this, this sheet. Um, so it would really just be a matter of, a majority of this board unanimous would be, would be great, but at least a majority of this board arriving at those items that you agree to include in that phase one project.
And I think what the issue is...
But that was not provided in today's...
No, we don't have it in here today.
I did, I remember, I was wanting to put the football court into the phase one and cut down on the playground equipment.
Yeah, I remember that.
That was, and...
That would require the transfer of the property from the school to us sooner than what they had planned on doing.
I guess the issue that I have with.
They can do that.
That's not a problem?
And I think that that's what, what we need to look at, being realistic, that if we were to be successful in receiving the grant, hopefully we will. That's a dollar for dollar, maximum of five hundred thousand. So I think that we really realistically probably have to look at no more than a half million dollars on this initial phase, unless we can piggyback in with some additional grants. So I think we need to look at something within that five hundred thousand dollar range of trying to bring this project as far as we can.
Do we have to have one?
One million with us doing five hundred?
But I understood from McGill that even if we go forward, let's just say that right now we say phase one is what we want to target, even as we're moving forward, we can still change that as the grant money comes in. So it's not something that that is set in concrete, even if we say yes on that tonight.
There, uh, the only way that would affect us is if we were to receive a certain amount of points because of a particular type of thing that's included. If that's pulled out, then that would hurt us on the point system.
And also, I'm a little concerned when you're talking about match dollar for dollar. We've got some other projects that needs to be done and do, or we gonna have any extra money to do anything with it, but, um, the budget rolls around, I mean, we gonna have a dollar to match a dollar with. Extra. That's my concern about, they talking about five hundred thousand dollars, that's pretty substantial amount.
But we've also asked for money from, uh, federal and state, money from them to help with this project. So even if we, and we can use one of those as the match to the Part F grant.
Yes, that would be, one, so once the Part F grant's written, there would be other avenues pursued for additional grant funds of dollars that could be used to satisfy our match requirement. So it may be that, you know, we, if we were, let's assume we received another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then our match would then drop to two fifty for the full five hundred match to.
But what is the timeline between when you have to accept and pay your match with when the other grants might be available?
I believe Part F works where we pay it all and they reimburse.
When would you know, when will we know if we're approved for this or not? What's the timeline of that?
I think the grants are due in May, and for some reason, I wanna say it's September.
One May is when it's due.
Yeah.
Well, but we've also asked, you know, we revised our list, our wish list to the legislature, and I think this was moved to number four.
Yes.
So there'll probably be, if they fund any of those or some of them, there'll probably be some dollars that may be allocated to that, to help with that.
But what's the timing when they got that?
We won't know until the budget's done in two, like.
October, November.
Well, we hope.
Yeah, we hope, that's what they think.
How many years have we been waiting for a statement?
I know, they think they got it this year, but I don't.
Oh, here's a, I got one more. Do we have to decide what's gonna be in phase one, or just a dollar amount?
You need to decide what, uh, items are in phase one, because that supports the actual grant narrative, to see if you place.
What I'm wondering is, can we just approve a dollar amount tonight, and then next meeting actually have what's in, what we want in phase one?
Silas needs to have this so that he can work with Nate in getting the grant written.
I, I will say that if you arrive at a dollar amount that a majority of the board's comfortable with, that may help each of you then as you work through which items will fit. That's what I'm thinking. Within that dollar amount, but yes, once we produce the phase one for the grant, it, it has to list the items that we're going after and what their associated costs are.
So I also believe that when Nate and Curtis came and looked at everything and they put all of this together as engineers, they had reasons why they had these things in phase one, and then phase two and phase three. I personally would, would go along with their recommendations and keep phase one as is.
And, and they did suggest that we hold off on anything with the transfer of property until a second phase, um, because of the timing. And that, that was their recommendation.
Well, if we're, let's just say we're okay with reluctantly, in some respects, the million dollars. Let's say that's the number, to get the five hundred. And if we can agree on that, could we get a copy and have it tomorrow? And we'll go through it and, and work out the, the numbers as to what the items are gonna be included in that million dollars.
We're kind of limited because of the fact that those items have points.
Right, and we'll have to decide that tomorrow.
You really can't take out the things that are likely to give us the grant.
And I think that's also, because Nate had worked with the grants for so many years, he knew the things that would help us score more points to get the grant. That's why I'm saying.
What was the total of phase one?
One as is and see where all the grant money comes in.
Contingent, seeing everything a little over two million.
Well, how about this, before we meet tomorrow? Could you contact the engineers and ask them point-wise if they had to cut something out of phase one and move it closer to a million dollars, even if it's a little over? Which points they think they would really need, or items they'd need to get in there to get us a better score? And let's see what those are, and we can discuss it tomorrow.
I'll ask them their recommendation for a phase one that sits within that one million dollar mark.
Close.
And give us the best chance.
Best chance, pick out that, okay.
I'll make a motion, we put this out till tomorrow, get our budget, get our budget here.
Have a motion and a second, would you say that?
I'll say that.
Okay, all in favor?
And Ron, this ain't directed to you, but come to our budget hearing tomorrow if you would like. It starts at two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
Yeah, two o'clock, just so, just so you know, we advertise some of ours, but don't get out a whole lot, so.
Okay, now, uh, do, make that gets everything on the list, so. Does it have any county major?
I do. One quick item, uh, just as an update on Blue Ridge Mountain EMC's work on the fiber line that, that, you know, took forever just to get the approvals through everyone. Um, out Joe Brown, the hanging dog area, uh, the information I received is that they are almost one hundred percent complete on the main line. Splicing is well underway. Uh, they were delayed by supply chain issues like everybody is, but they've gotten over that now, and they're moving forward. As of Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, their first fiber customers in the project area were lit live, so they do have access to that service now. Additional customers are planned to be lit during, you know, the following weeks. Uh, they expect to have a majority of the core fiber along that main line lit within the next six months, with those further from the car on those side lines being lit sometime thereafter. And right now, they have a fifty-eight percent tank rate for the fiber service, and they expect that to grow dramatically once the fibers lit. That's just kind of an update on where they are with that project.
And to add to that, as far as Andrews, uh, they called the other day and said that with the cable, cable company, that they're putting that high-speed fiber optic around the perimeter of Andrews and in Andrews, and they hope to start making some connections within the next week, and then within a couple of months have everyone. But Mr. Daniels called and said that they're gonna have capacity for businesses such that they've got three sources. So if one source goes down, they can go to source two, two, one and two, they can go three, so should, should be very reliable. So hopefully that'll be, they're building the lines now, they should start hooking up within a week, two weeks, and within probably four or five weeks, they have most of those. Okay, do we have any questions, Ron? Do you have? Okay, I'll move on.
Motion going to close session with five-minute break.
Yeah, let's go see it.
Six minutes.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?